Six thirty. Call the meeting to order. First item of business is public comment. If anyone has a comment for the board, please go to the podium, state your name and address. Direct your comments to the board and not to the audience, and you have three minutes. Okay, good job, guys. I am number three, Dr. Morse.
Thank you again for your time. What we've been trying to do is keep the select boards and the council informed of the progress on the middle school. We're very close to a major milestone. On Wednesday, we will absolutely have the guaranteed maximum price on the project. We'll present that to the school board. As soon as that information is shared with the school board, I'll contact Julie, and she can share it with this board. So we're about two days ahead of that announcement, and so I want to share that with my board, and then we'll make sure that the elected officials know. So as all of you know, we've been involved in planning for the construction of a brand-new middle school. And the rationale behind that is the current middle school has been open since 1936. And it has served the district extremely well. But it's time to put money into that building would truly be a waste of taxpayers' money at this point. Infrastructure needs, safety needs, ADA compliance needs, maintenance needs, all add up to tens of millions of dollars. And when you get to a certain point, it doesn't make sense investing in the old building. It's been added on two, four times. So the new building, as I've shared with you in the past, is really based, no surprise, on improving the academic environment for our students. But three other factors play into it, which is the safety of our kids. The current building really is, as it extended over the years, created a lot of safety issues for our kids. Parent drop-off, where kids are mixing in with cars, the buses and the cars mixing in together, the ADA compliance issues. For 1996, we met code; in 2019, you would never meet code. Two different elevators in the building, many, many lifts and walkways and stairs. Kids who have a broken leg or kids who have a lifetime disability in the building is really problematic. So tonight, what I thought I would do is introduce you to the team who designed the building and who is going to build the building. So two gentlemen right here in the front row. Ron is our architect. He has done an outstanding job listening to a host of players, from students to adults in the community, to teachers. And based on that initial input, has really put together a pretty fabulous design. And Andre is our construction manager. Andre actually did the entrance on the Masway School. He did the entrance on the Moheramit School. He did the fields at the high school. He did the very first project that we did together, which was the addition of the gymnasium, expanding the gymnasium at Moheramit. So we have a long history. So a construction manager, in this case Andre, looks at the drawings that the architect does and starts working with subcontractors to see what a realistic price would be. So through last spring and this fall, as I've talked to you, I've said it's going to be about a $49 million building. And it's Ron's job to seek out the subcontractors, electrical subcontractors, HVAC, concrete, steel, all the different pieces that come into a building, and try to get as close to that number as possible. So as of Wednesday night, it no longer will be an estimate, it will be the exact figure. And that figure is guaranteed, so there's no creep. There's no possibility of me coming to the taxpayers and saying, "Oh, we were off by $3 million." The number that comes out on Wednesday is the number. So I asked Ron to just do a quick overview of the project, what you've seen before. But he said he has a couple of new slides that he puts into the project. And then we'll open it up, questions on this part of the agenda, because I see I have two other things I need to talk to you about. So, Ron.
All right, thank you. So as Dr. Morse pointed out, what we're really focusing on with the design of this building is sustainability, academics, safety, and wellness. All of the things that you see listed there, such as building is teacher, an inclusive environment, safe, secure, welcoming, inspiring, those are the things that have come up during all of our community workshops and discussions with the students and faculty as to what's important when it comes to academics, which they don't have now. When it comes to sustainability, there's been a sort of a big push during this project so that when the building is built, it's going to operate much more efficiently and effectively through a practical design. And what you see here is that our predictions and the energy models that we're using with all of the high-performance systems and the upgraded insulation within the building, the building should act or perform 66% better when it comes to energy efficiency than the existing building. And that includes everything from geothermal systems to LED lighting within the building. Safety itself, as you can see on the screen, what we were proposing to do is put the building where the ball field is today at the middle school site. We're going to then demolish the existing building, which is here right now, and build the soccer field. And most importantly, we're separating all of the bus traffic, which will remain on Code Drive, with parent drop-off and faculty parking. So essentially, what we get is the same number of parking spots, all up Code Drive, Dennison, and Garrison. We add some parking in the back of the building, and we add a safe parent drop-off. And we're working with the town of Durham right now to take a look at how those streets can be made to be even safer. The reason why the building is so energy efficient is because we've decided to go vertical with the building, and that also ties into safety, which means for most of the day, the students are in the core learning spaces on the second, third, and fourth floor. And the first floor is dedicated to common areas and public space. So again, it basically allows those students to have a safe place on the upper floors. The floors themselves, we have one main front door, as you may have seen in the past. All of that red is support spaces of administration, leadership, counseling. Then we have the athletics, the gym for PE. We have the music recital hall. And then we have the library and the common area, and that's all on the first floor. One of the biggest things academically is to have four stairs in the building so that, as we see on the fourth floor, every team can go from the common areas to their team space without having to go through other teams. So it really reduces the distractions that take place today. On the second floor, we have our specials. So we have health, we have foreign language, STEM, and art, all on the second floor, again with more music and counseling taking place. And then the third and fourth floors are the same. Each one of these colors represents a different team in the middle school level. What we've done is created basically a team. So each grade, five, six, seven, and eight, all have two teams associated with them. So this becomes their academic world, and they can visit every team, but they have their own stairs to go up and down to the specials and to the common areas. The fourth floor is exactly the same. Again, there's efficiencies, both spatially and construction-wise. This is what the outside of the building would look like from Dennison. So as you drive on Dennison today, that green field out in front is where the existing building is. When that comes down, this will be the new building in the background. From a scheduling point of view, as Dr. Morse said, Andre will be building this. And so what we're hoping for is that the community will go out and vote on March 10th, assuming or hoping, wishing that the vote does pass. We wanted to highlight some of the schedule and milestones that will take place after the vote. And by putting together this team that Dr. Morse has, and we've been working together over the last year, that enables us to actually bid the site foundations and steel right after the vote passes, so in March and April. That allows us to actually start construction as soon as school lets out. So as soon as the school lets out, in June, we'll be under construction. We've got bid packages, again, to expedite everything. And by expedite, and you know that time is money. So any time that we can save, have it built into the schedule. You're going to get a final GMP in August, and that's when all the trades have been bid out. And as Dr. Morse said, Andre will be coming to the school board this week with a final number, and that's the guaranteed maximum price. The goal is that you'll actually be seeing steel start to go up after the site, and the foundations, they start construction when school lets out. And then in 2021, we're going to move furniture in. Excuse me, 2022. And in February of 2022, we've completed all the academic areas within the school itself. The staff and the students will move in in February of 2022. The students will come, and when they come back from February vacation, they'll be in the new school. And what that enables Andre to do is then start the demolition of the existing school and then complete all of the fields and the parking lots and the drives throughout the summer so that the final project completion is in August, just before school starts in 2022. And that's it. I apologize if I went too fast, if you have any questions or anything.
Any questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
Yes, thank you very much for your time.
So it should say that Andre had an hour and a half speech ready to talk about the construction process, but he lost his voice coming in. That's the end of our formal presentation related to the new middle school. Then we can pick up other issues that are on the agenda, if you're ready.
Three B is, I think, your issue.
Yep.
So that's why the principal, can you talk to us a little?
Sure. So we're replicating, we are in the process of getting ready to advertise for the new principal at the Masway School. The process is about a four-month process. Part of the process involves a very comprehensive interview committee. When I did this for the Moheramit School, I invited representation from the select board. I extend the same invitation to this select board, since it is a Masway principal. In addition to the select board member, we also will have parents that represent the different grade levels. We'll have parents who represent special needs population. Same thing with teachers, we'll have teachers from different grade levels, and we'll have teachers who serve special needs children. We'll also have administration, and we'll have school board members. And since Brian Cisneros represents Lee, he'll be one of them. And I believe Kenny was the other one, right? So Kenny Rotner from Durham will be the other board member. So it seems like a big committee, but it actually gets bigger. Yeah, that's the crew that will actually ask the questions. The process I put together is what I call a fishbowl process. So that selected group I talked about is the inner circle. And then the faculty represent an outer circle, faculty and staff. And they are providing feedback to the inner circle as people go through the interview process. It could be described as intimidating, but the real point is to be very thoughtful and thorough. The process is an incredibly successful process for the Moheramit School, and we anticipate it being equally successful here. So all of that effort is just to be able to find the very best elementary principal we can find for the Masway School. To compare this to the beginning of my career, I would have interviewed those people by myself, and I would have selected the person. But times change, and people want to have input, and they want to participate in the process, and this is the way to provide the ultimate participation. And I'm very confident the process will work. It's worked for us before. And so I invite the select board to appoint the select board member who's willing to put in the time to be part of that effort.
So you've started getting candidates now?
Nope, we'll advertise. So right now, all I'm doing is the prep work of pulling the committee together. And in November, December, and January, I'll be meeting with the faculty. The three questions that I'll be asking them is, what are the characteristics that they're looking for in a successful candidate? The next one is, what are the traditions of Masway that are important to maintain? So as an example, when Masway opens up the school year, the entire student population surrounds the American flag, and they have kind of a welcoming ceremony around the flag. That only happens at the Masway School. Moheramit has a different tradition. And as you go through the school year, the way that schools maintain their own individual identity is they have different traditions throughout the school year. Some of them are like integral to who they are as a school. And some of them are just, you know, "It's nice that we do that, but do we have to do that?" kind of thing. And so we try to separate that. And then the last session with staff is actually the development of questions that relate back to the characteristics and the traditions of the building. So I do that once a month for the next three months. And then I bring the committee together in January and February. So I'll advertise for the position in January, I believe, and February. That's the prime time when you start seeing administrators looking for their next challenge. So that's one of the reasons we went with an interim this year, because the resignation of Kerry was so late in the year. We didn't feel like we'd get the best candidates in that timeline. So this process will allow us to seek out the best candidates in the right timeframe. And then we'll spend February and March interviewing. And then by the time we hit April, it shifts back to me and Todd, and we'll start doing the reference checks for the finalists. And then we'll invite two of the finalists here into the Masway School for a day. And concurrently, we'll be sending Root to their current assignment to see whether what they put down in paper and how they answer the questions actually is operationalized in the building they currently work in. So it's a very thorough process, and yet I think it's well worth the investment because we want to make sure we get a person who stays for years, not just for a little while.
Anybody interested? Yes? Oh, we'll talk later. Okay.
India, I'm a little bit...
When do you need to know why?
Anytime you guys are ready to make a decision, because I'm not actually forming the committee until January. So at whatever point it fits into your agenda. But you know, I wouldn't necessarily, sooner is better, but as soon as you feel comfortable.
We'll take under advisement.
There you go.
It's not a joke.
No, it's not a joke.
Three C.
So the three C is about the use of school property. So we did run into a hiccup, and I have since talked to the school board. So when we use each other's property, you know, the concept was there's no cost to necessarily using it. So we don't have, the request was for a sustainability committee to be on a Sunday, and we don't have any coverage in the building on Sunday. There's no custodian in the building. And then there was also that expectation to use, I believe, the cafeteria. The cafeteria, maybe not the kitchen. But if it was the kitchen, then I have another hiccup. But in any case, the cost of that was going to be around $365. And then I think I got a contact from Julie and Paul, and so, you know, I realized it was going to be a hiccup. So I waived the fee on that particular instance so that, you know, we kept everything peaceful. So in talking to the school board, what we decided was that if it's an approved subcommittee of any of the towns, like Sustainability is approved subcommittee of this body, then we would treat it just like we would treat it if the select board wanted to use the building. We wouldn't charge. The only place that the school board made an exception is if, say, a recreation program from town wanted to use our field at the high school and wanted to turn on the lights, we would have to charge for that because the lights are $75 an hour when we turn those things on. And when outside we refuse them, we do have to charge for that. But we'll absorb the cost in the future of custodians. One potential hiccup, since I talked to the board, is I need to clarify, if somebody wanted to literally use the kitchen as opposed to the cafeteria, I do think by federal rules, I have to have an employee of the kitchen present. That has to do with free and reduced food, you know, the food stops that the federal government give us. But the school board, as we were working through, this has been a big issue for the school board, not the request that you guys made, but overall, we've been talking about it for about three months. So the fact that the issue happened during the time the board was having a conversation about facility use actually worked out really well. So overall, the board wants to treat the town of Lee and any approved subcommittee, the town of Maberry, any approved subcommittee, the town of Durham, and any approved subcommittee at no cost. And so when we worked out that first agreement, they don't know that we actually got down to the fact that we had to bring in special staff that we would have to absorb that cost. But in talking to the school board, they're okay with that. So I think it's a non-issue at this point.
So just going forward, you have to bring in somebody special on Sunday. Is that the only time, or?
Saturdays and Sundays. So our custodians work on Monday through Friday schedule, and they work into the evening. So if you had a subcommittee, like say that sustainability committee wanted to use the cafeteria in any given workday, week, night, we already have coverage. What caused this one to pop up was we don't have any coverage. But we still would have to bring a person in, because we have to make sure that the building is secure, opened, closed, that kind of thing, and cleaned. So the school board has decided they'd absorb that. So if it's not an approved subcommittee of your body, then we would charge. So I would rely on Julie to tell me that this is an approved subcommittee of the town, and that will take care of it. I wouldn't know off the top of my head what committees you have going, but clearly she would, and so she can communicate with me.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Appreciate that. And I do understand the issue about whites and the recreation field.
So you know, it's all the same taxpayer.
Sure.
So you know, that's how kind of we saw it. It's one pocket of the other pocket. You know, if we're paying for it or you're paying for it, it's all impacting the same taxpayer. So we try to be as respectful of the taxpayers as we possibly can because we wouldn't be here without them.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks.
And thank you for bringing all your crew. You're taking them out for treats afterwards, right?
Yeah, they have paper on, they probably want to go home.
It's still 37 degrees, so it's okay.
Yeah, that's true.
Good luck, Andre.
And by the way, just so you didn't miss out on the complete set, I brought you the latest.
Yep, yep, yep. What's the thing, you collect all of them?
I was going to stop.
You get a prize?
I was going to stop at the store and get you some bubble gum or something.
Because you're 52 in the back.
52? I think I only had like seven.
Thank you very much for tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Harry?
Don't leave, this is going to be exciting. Look at them running away. They're looking for a census job, so you can either wait or complain.
That's Brian, give up your day job and work for the Census Bureau.
A little nutty there, huh?
Thank you very much. You did too, that's right. You folks would like a copy of what I'm going to speak about?
I'll take one, just one is fine.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
That's what I'm going to be speaking about. I apologize not taking dress like Dr. Morse, it was a long day. I took off the suit and tie, took off the shoes, brown sneakers.
I enjoyed you.
Thank you, good evening. Thank you for having me in. Thank you, folks. My name is Richard Ehren. I'm a partnership specialist with the U.S. Census Bureau. And what I'm going to be speaking about is in your folder on the right-hand side in the back. It's behind the timeline. Very pleased to be here with two very, very special young ladies, and you gentlemen as well. Now, as most of you probably know, the Census is coming up next year. And it's by law every 10 years. The first one was in 1790. I won't say anything about it if Mr. Brown was there or not, but... Armistice lacrosse, it's all right.
I was just eating here anyways.
Anyway, this will be the 23rd Census. That'll be happening.
What did he say?
Not a problem, quite honestly. The Census Bureau is the largest statistical agency in the U.S. By law, we do the 10, every 10 years, the desatiable Census. We go up and count everybody in the U.S. one time in the right place. It's not a big job, there's only 330 million people. And 140 million households. So it does take a bit of a team effort to get going through it. There's all sorts of programs that go on, other than the every 10 years. We have the American Housing Survey. We have economic surveys, we have business surveys. Approximately 130 surveys all going on through the Census at any one time. Over to page two. A lot of folks are probably not even aware of what the Census is, let alone what it does. It counts everybody, and it comes right down to the first or fourth things I'm going to mention. Comes down to the money. Show me the money. There's $675 billion that's out there that's going to be allocated to the states, towns, cities, right down to the local level, right down to people that do funding, school programs, after-lunch programs, bridges, roads. It all comes from that, and that's why it's important. I've been asked, "Why don't you just take the voting list?" Well, the voting list is this much, the town population is that much. You want to make sure we get everybody. Everybody must be counted right from day one. If you're born on April 1st, you'll be counted. So beyond that, it's very, very important to get that complete count and get it accurate because of the money. If there's anybody else there that does anything in the way of charging you for this information, that's wrong. The second page has a fraud number on it that you can call and report anybody that's charging you for any kind of statistical data that you're looking for. Because we can provide that absolutely free. We give you logos, we can give you drop-in articles for your newsletter, your town website, and anything that your folks need. By all means, ask, you can go on your own, and take a look at what's there and take care of it yourself. A lot of folks like doing that as well. So again, we want to count everybody once and in the right place. It is mandated by Article 1, Section 2. The forefathers thought it important enough to put it right up front in the Constitution. Again, this will be the 23rd one. So it's important. It determines not only the population, what they get money-wise, it's also for congressional seats, voting rights, voting places, things like that. Again, $675 billion in federal funding is out there, Medicaid, SNAP, school lunch programs. It's mentioned on page three. Second effort is that it's safe, second point. We have the highest, the most quality cyber security that you can possibly imagine. People have tried to get this data from the Census Bureau through either lawsuits, they have never won. It is totally safe, it is totally secure. The information that I have to go through to sign on my computer is four passwords. So sometimes it doesn't want to cooperate if I'm not in my home base, so that's why you're getting the information on the thing here. We have an oath that we have to take, if you have an ID. And if we break that oath in any way, we give out the information, there's two things that can happen to us. We can pay a fine of $250,000, or we can go to jail for five years, or both. Neither one much, quite frankly, I can afford. So I want to make sure that I keep it on the up and up. Again, on page four, it's safe and secure. A very, very high cybersecurity. Folks, they take care of that. There's lots of firewalls, there's lots of things you get in the ways if anybody wants to get the data. And the third point is it's very easy to do. The old days, they would send you a form, and you fill it out and send it back. That's still available, the table form. This is the first year that they'll actually be using the computer and telephone that you can actually do that. You can get online and send in your information, call up. And if one of those three ways is not used, the fourth way, somebody's knocking on your door. Then, once you self-respond, and once you send the information back, your commitment is done. And it kind of makes you feel good. I feel pretty good when I send the information in. I feel pretty good when I come out of the voting booth, to know I'm part of that, so... Then, a lot of folks don't speak English in this country. Then, a lot of folks don't speak English in this country. We have twelve languages that you can call up on the phone and look at, that's on page, the next page, page five. And they're listed there. In addition to those twelve languages, there are up to a total of fifty-nine other ones that can be had. If you know somebody that speaks something that's not on this list, we can find somebody that can address them, give them the information in that language. When I, with training in New York, I had Korean gentleman, Russian, Chinese, Mandarin, Chinese, Lord, Cantonese. So I was surrounded by folks that spoke very good English, but we are looking for people that, that do speak a different language. I was lost in my, in my German, no Germans in the room, so. Again, on page five, there's a list of the non-English language supporters who are there to look at that. On to page six, we want to have everybody invite them to be part of the census. A gentleman mentioned the morning of March, that's when it would be also where you're receiving information about the census. You'd get a postcard that's, that's out there that lets you know that happens mid-March. April first is Census Day, that's when it really officially starts, but if you get the information and you can do it before that, that's fine. I thought April Fool's Day was a good day, that was a, that was my, that was my decision, they thought that was okay. Again, it's safe, it's secure, it's easy, those are the three big points. The other point is census jobs. In New Hampshire, they're looking to hire thirteen thousand people, I believe it's slightly under ten thousand now, when they started. They are looking for people that do data entry, clerks, getting the process, putting it in the computer, and eventually the enumerers, the people that will go around and do the door knocking. Pays pretty well, too, it's seventeen fifty an hour. So if there's any college students or friends that are looking for a job, part-time will be starting next year, they're hiring now, so it should go until late summer, before the kids get back to school. They just have to be eighteen, and you have to pass a background check, and that's pretty much about it. Hey, they hired me, I mean, tomorrow, that's, you know, that much. Also, they'll be counting everybody, like I mentioned before, nursing homes, hospitals, hotels, wherever people gather, wherever people live, on April first. If the student is still in school at Durham, they'll be counted there, even if you live somewhere, a place outside of state, that's where they are on April first. Everybody, prisons, jails, it's a pretty good bet that the people in the prisons pretty much knows the number that are in there. If they're off, there's something wrong somewhere. But some key milestones, we passed a few of them already, they opened up some activities, hired a lot of folks. The main one coming up is January, that the advertising campaign will begin. You'll see billboards, newspapers, radio, and it's, it's kind of funny, this is the first one in twenty years that a political campaign is also going on at the same time. So ten years ago, it wasn't too, too bad. So there's going to be a lot of things going on, signing first of the year. And a lot of folks that work in political campaigns that will be here in February, that won't be counted, they'll be wherever they are on April first, will be counted, depending on whether that particular election happens to occur. So mid-March, they'll be getting the information, Census Day is April first, they'll be going door to door mid-May. The information should be all finished by the, by the end of September. And by the end of the year, December thirty-first, we have to get the information together and present it to the office in Washington so they can distribute the information. Twenty twenty-one, first quarter, that's when the money will get distributed, congressional districts will be formed, and that's when the, a lot more fun starts. Now, you folks here, we're gonna ask you to help us out in becoming a partner, which I'll, which you actually have been since I gave you that information, but we're looking to have you folks form a complete council committee. And what that basically is, is to get together and talk about the census. You have three people, you can have thirty people, you can have a hundred people. The town can have one, the fire department can have one, police department can have one, the schools can have one, you can serve on one or the other, or many, makes no difference. The idea is that you folks help us get the word out, because most people know you, trust you, have seen you around the town or around where you live, they don't know me as well. So I'm asking you to do that. I have some information on how to do that, I'll leave that for you. And basically, it's, whoever wants to be in it. We just had a big one in Rochester, school principals, their students, somebody from the media, people that would, law enforcement, as well as town officials. They had sixty-five or seventy-five people for this kickoff, it was quite a thing. I can get publicity, Carriestown News, of course, it's just south here, there's other things around, local TV, anything for a logo, anything for a news article. Again, we'll be happy to provide that. We're in the education and awareness phase now, the motivation phase will start in the spring, and eventually we'll break through the thank you phase towards the end of the year. We support partners with promotional material, content, again, logos, drop-in materials. You want to put a billboard up, we'll pick somebody that can put something on it, that's not a problem. The share, the job recruitment is also handy, I've got some information there as well, part of it's also in the folder, the old things on the side, they are looking for people. One of the big things that I've been asked about is this Rome. Right now, anybody that has a computer, private, personal, town, state, can go on this Rome on page nine and see how the demographic information is available. Once the census starts in March, April, you'll be able to go on there and see daily how the census is progressing. Jeez, how's my town doing? I haven't heard anybody, I haven't heard from Mr. Brown yet. No, excuse me, not my name. But.
You will.
I hope so. You have a great sense of humor, I appreciate that. But you can go on each town and see how the different districts are doing, the map on the next page is the, we just showed Manchester, because it's the biggest city, and you can look on to the L there and see populations of age levels, hobby levels, graduates, different cultures, all available. And again, once the census happens, that'll keep changing daily.
You're out of New York?
I'm sorry?
You personally, you are in?
No, I live in Boston.
Oh, okay.
But my training was in New York. The New York office covers all of New England, New York State, New Jersey, and Puerto Rico.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, and Puerto Rico?
Yes. I told them, I really.
Well, you gotta have a place to go, don't you?
I'd really like to go there for a couple of weeks, say in January, just kind of help out and everything, but it turned out my offer. The data dissemination again is for you folks, you can go in by these websites here and look at it, take anything you want. It's all free, it's all available. Again, if anybody charges, they shouldn't be. So the data is available at census.gov, jobs are available at census.gov/jobs. And there's a lot of information out there, we just really could really ask for your help to give us a hand. The final page on eleven is a nice sunny day that's going to be occurring when this is all over. Everybody will have a sunny disposition and everything, but people feel great. You can contact us on, here are those websites, the Facebook, Twitter, YouTube, et cetera. And finally, on the back page, there's a way to contact us, there's a partnership program. You can check me out if you'd like. Census jobs and the data dissemination, again, that fraud number is back, it's second page, I believe it was. So they are looking for jobs, they do pay quite a bit. Rome is very, very easy to use, special to use, and that's pretty much about it. Any questions?
Questions? No.
Census comes under what, Commerce?
Yes, that's correct. My, my big boss is the Secretary of Commerce. But I was hired, I actually worked in twenty-ten, so this is my fourth tenure with the census. So twenty-seventeen was the last one, it was the American Housing Survey. So it's a, it's a very interesting job, you meet a lot of folks, and I get to travel around. I was in Rockingham County primarily, but now I've been assigned to Stratford County. So I'm getting into that and working my effect, I'm heading out to Stratford and New Durham and Farmington tomorrow.
So you have a state organization?
Yes.
And then you have county?
That's correct.
Okay.
State organization, right through the governor's office, the congressional office, I've met Mr. Sununu a number of times. Governor, excuse me, Governor Sununu. And we're working with the State Library Association, they've been wonderful. State Senior Association, libraries have the computers that people can go in and just use them if they're available at home. The seniors, same thing, there's usually a computer person in their, in their area that can help them take care of that. One of the most underpopulated groups are young children. And again, it's everybody, so you don't, you don't think eighteen, because you have to be eighteen to work, and you have to be eighteen to vote, but it's everybody.
Can you go to, and I noticed in here, you send out a notice and they can fill it out online?
Right.
And if you get it in the mail, you can fill it out and send it back. And then if they don't respond, you send somebody out. So how many times do you send people out? Like for instance?
You will get a fresh reminder?
Yep.
Somebody will send it out, I believe it's three times. And then if we're not able to get you, and you're, you're not able to be there, and it's like.
So they just don't get counted?
No. They don't guess.
Okay.
So I mean, if they miss somebody that has either a family issue or is traveling extensively and they're not able to be there, that happens. And again, there are people that absolutely won't do it, so.
Okay.
I mean, last, the last one in twenty-ten, they had a response rate in the low nineties, which is very, very good.
That's very.
So that's like an eight.
You deal with much fraud?
People lying about, people are there or not there, and vice versa?
In today's world, the simple answer is yes.
Yeah.
There are people that want to sell this information to people that, in business, hey, I can give you this great detailed chart, or we should start your hair salon, we can too. So there are people that unfortunately, I could ask, why don't you do it in a email blast or a cell phone blast? Or how many, how many calls do you get during, during a week of those scams? How many emails do you get? In fact, if you look on my phone, we just, I just got, we did, the whole department got one today, somebody from, don't answer it, delete this one.
You sort out citizenship?
I'm sorry, sir?
Do you sort out citizenship, i.e.?
No. The things that will not be asked, social security number, bank records, your citizenship. They will ask you your cultural heritage, yes. Where are you from? I'm from Italy, I'm from, you know, from South America, whatever. Again, that's just a demographic way to do that. And most people are fairly proud of their heritage, they will answer honestly. But they will not answer, you know, if you're here illegally, that's not, that is not our concern, you know, we just want the number. In twenty-ten, I worked with a Burmese population, and they are not really tall in stature, the men are about five-five or five-six. First time I ran into one, Vicki, I got the deer in headlights look, I liked it, you know. Oh my goodness, you know. But once they found out what I wanted, they worked very, very nicely with it. I work for Central Africans, Arabic, and the Chinese population. And I don't speak any of those languages, but the interpreters do, so. Again, it's how many people in this house, how many people in that home, how many people in the nursing home, how many people in jail. So good?
Yeah, great.
Will be looking for some information to put on our website?
Please do. And again, if you have a moment, you can contact me, I'll get it to you. Or you can go online and see if there's something that you specifically would like, that's great.
Thank you very much.
And again, they are looking for people who work too, if you know somebody that has a great part-time job, so. I thank you very much for the privilege of your time.
Thank you.
That means nothing. Steve Bullock, Public Works Manager.
If you're interested, if you know anybody who does.
Before you start, can I ask you a question? Who are you gonna get some compost bags in?
They're in.
They're in?
See, now he's getting rid of it.
You're behind the times.
Thank you, folks.
I ordered them two weeks ago, they came this morning.
Yeah.
They usually come the same week, I ordered them, for some reason I was delayed. So Tuesday last week, the furnace stopped. I had the company that has the contract come in, they were there five minutes, said the heat exchanger was cracked and they needed a new one, and only five minutes of looking at it, so. It still kind of ran at that point, so we went in two more days until they could get a second opinion. After, Strogians came in that time and gave us a quote for a new one also, which you guys have in your agenda packet. Another guy came in, that he doesn't have a gas license for furnaces, so he just can do the readings, look at it. He could, and so he didn't have a horse in the race, he gave an assessment, it's cracked, we do need a new one. So I got a good assessment from someone who can't even put a quote in on it, so. You guys have a quote from Strogians, I think, one of them, it's for ninety-one hundred dollars, the other one is for seventy-seven, there's two separate furnaces on there. I got three other quotes also, and I'll pass these around so you guys can read them. One of them's from D.F. Rashard, they were fifty-seven, sixty. Another one's from Garrison City, H.V.A.C., which is five thousand, and then there's another one from T.R.O.A.T.O.H.V.A.C. in Nottingham, and his is for fifty-six.
They're all over the place.
Just barely got them today.
It's all for the same?
Yeah, so I did my own research, and from what I can tell, the Strogians bids are so high because they did some high-end specialty furnace that only they do, and that's all fine and dandy. The problem is, is the furnace brand, they control all their parts, so you can't go to a brand group or FW web and buy the parts for that furnace. So you're kind of stuck at that point. So other people can fix them, but then they have to go through that company to get the parts and send them in, and then if we go that way, which I'm not recommending, if that company goes out of business in five years and the furnace breaks in six, you're then trying to find parts. I think all the quotes that Kerry has in his hand, all the furnaces in that are right around the same, they're all ninety-five percent efficient. The lowest bid, Garrison City's actually who I use at my house, I just, I needed people to come give us quotes, he does good work. He has the Saturday labor charge on there, because he is so busy that the only time he'd even be able to come do an installation is on a Saturday. And that's not for probably a week and a half. The other ones, I am not a hundred percent sure when they would be able to come in and do it. I should say currently, there's space heaters in the building, and this past weekend, we kept it at sixty degrees of space heater, so it's not, it was cold out. It's not of vital importance it gets done tomorrow, so we can wait a week and a half if that's how you guys choose to go.
And these are the same BTUs they throw?
Yeah, sixty thousand BTU. That's what's there, and that's what's worked well to keep it heated, so I wasn't going to go any higher or any lower, just replacing kind of.
Who did the library? Was that Strogian?
D.F. Rashard did one in our building also, the modem here. It seemed to have gone okay. And D.F. Rashard's not the actual company that does it. There's another company called Admiral that actually puts them in and does it. D.F. Rashard's, the oil, or the company we get our propane from over there, so I called them. So with their names on the quote, they're not the actual company that's going to do the work.
So Steve, this is the original furnace in the building as well?
Yes. So I think it's sixteen years old. When it finally decided it didn't want to run anymore at all, the site last year, you can see inside the firebox, blew out across the room and melted, so.
I guess it's not, it's terrible.
That was, that was the end of that, it stopped running at all at that point.
All right. I will just go ahead with Steve's recommendation, is it this time? Mr. Brown?
I have no, I mean, they're all within what, a couple hundred bucks, one's fifty-seven, one's fifty-six, one's.
Five. Yeah, one's five thousand, one's fifty-six hundred, and one's fifty-seven sixty.
Yeah. So I think it just, on the top of it, just since we buy, apparently most of our oil[1759.54]
oil and gas from D.F. Richard, it just seems to me we wanna focus on aid vendor for the town to, I think in the long run, you come out better if you...
For seven hundred and sixty dollars, I'd be disinclined to go that way.
So, can I speak on that? When D.F. Richard's put the one in the highway garage, I know that my two guys weren't very impressed with what it was, and they thought that we got taken for a ride on it. Pricewise.
They thought what?
We, the town had been taken for a ride pricewise on it, they weren't very happy with it, you know, for it.
The other thing, I'm basing that on the Garrison City, the cheaper one is, is recommending a ream. I'm familiar with them.
Yeah.
Uh, the TROATO is just New York, never heard of them, and this one is a Fujitsu, never heard of it. So, part of my thing is price, but the other part is, I, reams are fine, so. And Lennox, which is way more expensive, those are like, top of the line, so. So, that's why I would suggest that we do the Garrison City one, plus Steve has a, uses them for his house, so. He can yell at the guy if he doesn't do a good job, so. Mister, Mister Tappin?
It's Tappin, the Mister Tappin.
Are you gonna talk to us about taking a job with the Census, John?
No. I'm talking to Tappin, one eighty-seven stepping terms, really. I, I was just gonna ask, since recently, uh, the office there was, got new insulation, or additional insulation, is the same size furnace needed? I don't know the answer, um, but.
All right, Steve, can you?
That was part of the reason why additional insulation was put in.
I didn't know there was additional insulation put in, so.
Well, the other thing is you don't want a furnace to run at total capacity anyways, so.
Correct, because you also don't want it grossly oversized.
Yes.
And I don't know the answer.
I can't answer your question.
I don't, I just was trying to replace in kind with what was currently sitting there.
Right.
So, I have no problem going with Garrison.
So, I got the, if you're gonna go with Garrison City, the only thing in his that's not in anyone else's is if you read it, he wants half down to start. That's, I'm not, I don't get that part of it, but that's the only thing that I see that is different from the other ones.
We'd have to cut a check off.
We had to do that with D.F. Richard, too.
All right, it wasn't in the D.F. Richard quote?
I know we've done that, we've had to do that in the past, but, you know, Steve and I might be able to talk to the gentleman in Garrison City, and that might just be their standard language, we're a municipality.
It is a standard language, I know that, because he said something, that's how we normally do it, and stuff like that, so.
You know, we're not going anywhere, so.
Yeah, the, D.F. Richard's not mentioning anything about if you don't pay your bill. Well, if we have to, we can cut a check off cycle.
We'll see when we can do that or not.
Okay.
I'd rather talk to him than just handing you the check when it's all done.
All right, it's easiest way. Yeah, 'cause I, I'm most likely what it is, it's a cash flow issue probably for him.
Yeah, 'cause he is a single, he's the only one, and, and actually, the ETO guy's the same way, he's the only one.
Okay. So, maybe, well, have a conversation and see what happens. Um, and then we can take this out of Town Buildings Capital Reserve? Mister Tappin, that should be okay, right? It's a replacement, it's a capital replacement?
Yeah, in fact, it's in the CIP for twenty thirty.
Okay. Put this, okay.
That was optimistic.
Normally, furnaces last a long time.
Well, that's true, yeah, that's true.
Yeah, it's a little bit struck time, isn't it?
All right. I move to allow the Public Works Manager to have a contract with Garrison City HVAC hyphen R LLC, eight Will Broad Avenue, Dover, New Hampshire, to install a new furnace at the transfer station for the, for the amount of five thousand dollars. Set funds to come to the Town Buildings Capital Reserve Fund, do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
All right.
Motion passes. Leave these back.
No, if you guys want to keep them, you want?
Well, we'll make them.
Hey, do you have my piece of paper for Strogians, too? I have number six, Town Administrator, really good.
So, as I think you know, we went to the NHMA conference last week. And Denise and myself and Karen Rossi all attended a couple of different sessions on the right to know. And I don't believe that there's been any right-to-know training for the town committees and commissions and board since I've been here, so it's possible that it's been ten years since everybody has had right-to-know.
We have, we have had a couple. I went to one.
Right, right, but I mean, where we put the training on, and, you know, everybody tried to get as many people here as we could. So, uh, plus, we learned a few things we need to tighten up.
What are we doing wrong?
Well, some of the stuff for non-public really needs to be tightened up. Um, they've changed the laws, every year, they tweak the RSA ninety-one A laws, and in the past couple of years, they've made some changes to the minutes requirements. So, votes have to be, if decisions are made, votes have to be recorded, and enough detail has to be put in so that people can understand what was happening in the non-public. There was also, one of the attorneys talked about how you go into non-public, I gotta be honest, I'm not sure I agree that it's necessary, where if you're gonna talk about two different subjects, so let's suppose you're gonna talk about A, and you're gonna talk about B, then you go in, you say you're gonna talk about A, you go into the non-public, you come back out, you say you're gonna go, go in for B, and then you go back in. I certainly don't see that anywhere in the statute. So, in any event, that would certainly, if we decide to do the training, could be part of the discussion that we have. Um, NHMA will provide this training for us, uh, it's five hundred and fifty dollars. If we want to try to get other municipalities to join us, you know, to do a cost sharing, um, some towns do that. So, I'm just trying to determine whether the board is interested in seeing if we can get this set up. Um, okay.
I think it's a, I have tended to these in the past, and they're well worth it.
Yeah.
To get up to speed, and that way, then, we finally decide that it changes, everybody understands why.
I mean, I think it's not a bad idea for the boards and committees and commissions to hear, sit through some training, because they always have questions regarding minutes and posting, and so I think that it would probably be a good idea.
Let me just make the suggestion that put a survey out to our people and see whether you would like to come.
Yeah.
If you think it's a sizable group, you know, fifteen or so.
Right.
I don't know if I'd cost share as much.
Okay.
Because I'd rather have more focused session than I need, so if it looks like three or four people wanna show up, we definitely need to fatten it up, then it'll go up to the culture.
Okay.
Sounds good.
All right, thank you.
Well, that keeps us focused on us.
That's, uh, that's actually all I have.
That's it?
Yeah.
Well, I see what happens when you go away, there's nothing happened.
Last week was a short week, Monday was a holiday, and then we were out of the office for a couple days.
And next week will be a short week.
Are we miscellaneous?
We don't.
Oh. Anything with the volunteer, are we all set for that now? We all signed up full?
Yeah, we're ready.
I don't think, are you drifting over there?
Come on, go on right now.
Uh-oh, uh-oh, uh-oh.
Yes, we are, and I still, I need to confirm with those two that we're a baby.
No, town office is closed on next weekend, Thursday.
Thursday, Friday.
Thursday and Friday.
Mm-hmm. And I will be gone Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
And when did the, when did the volunteer nomination things? When did you put the deadline out?
I think that's long past, isn't it?
Oh, yes, we're past that, and...
So, can you forward those to us so we can?
You, well. There's just still the...
The two, there's just the two.
Okay, do you have those with you so we can at least?
Well, I thought we already told you who they were.
No, I did, but
Did you forget?
I wanted to see the, I haven't seen them.
It's just words, it's just verbal, I mean, it's just, there's no, there's nothing written, there's nothing.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
It's just, I wanna nominate, I, you know, I wanna nominate.
I don't have a reason why.
All right. So, a number eight, C is what?
C is if you discuss something about somebody that could be harmful to their reputation. We were trying.
So, I think I need an A, too.
Okay.
I need an A, because, all right. Well, I'll propose it, if you guys don't like it, you can say no.
Whatever.
Are we doing, are we doing the things I did, John, now?
Oh, yeah, we are, but I'm, I was,
Okay, yeah.
I was, I was streaming.
Okay.
Streaming.
Conscious thought that flows.
Conscious thought that...
Like water over rocks.
Gotcha.
Jesus. Now, number seven, I move to accept the consent change as presented, do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. You didn't like my little spiritual waterfalling or rock stuff?
I had to catch up to you.
No. I was, I was just streaming, so.
You were streaming? Just like California dreaming?
Maybe, maybe. You don't like that my line is on the other page and my name is on the other side?
Well, I don't.
What'd you say?
I don't like that.
What?
He doesn't like it.
What?
You don't like that, like, line is on one page and my name is on the...
I noticed that, yeah.
Not good, not good. Oh, we got a pen, too? Oh, boy. Hey, is this for the tree farm, this is just me?
I think so. I could only find one spot that said owner. Landowner.
Okay. You need an A, too, though, okay? Thanks. What's that?
I guess.
Evaluations, what did you say the deadline was, December?
December second, no later than December second.
All right, so we got one from building, we got the police one, so.
You got the police, yeah, I provided everybody.
Okay, all right. I move to enter a non-public session, number for RSA ninety-one dash A colon three, Roman numeral two, letters A and C. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
None.
None? Mister Brown? A or NAY?
NAY.
NAY?
Don't mess with us.
We're after discussion, we're talking about discussion, I don't have any discussion.
No, 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 we're past discussion. Are you in favor of going to non-public?
Yes.
Yes. Mister Hillary?
Yes.
Mister Bugby, yes, motion passes. Okay, miscellaneous unfinished business?
Uh, are we sealing the minutes?
No. We are not.
Okay.
And I will pick the volunteer award and let Denise know who those people are. Also, the TCVC would like some money, show me the money, as the Census guy says. So, we'd like what we got last time. Probably spend it this time.
Wait, you didn't spend it the last time?
No.
So, you still have it?
No, that, that was, that's gone. That lapse.
It's sunsetted.
You just said you didn't spend it.
We spent forty-two dollars.
Huh?
We spent forty-two dollars.
Forty-two dollars? Uh, the two thousand.
Wow.
This time, most likely, we'll spend the whole thing if we get the two thousand, so. So, I'm requesting two thousand dollars for TCVC expenses.
What you mean is?
I move.
That, no, that the TCVC is asking for authority to spend two thousand dollars because we can't, and you mean this year?
This fiscal year.
Right, because we can't.
No, not last.
Add to the budget.
No, no, no. I request, I move that we authorize the TCVC to spend up to two thousand dollars for, um, their charge.
For what?
For their charge to educate the public and to get the word out and things like that.
How much fund does it come out?
It's under the John course.
You're gonna educate the public for two thousand bucks?
We're gonna try to do the best that we can with two thousand.
It's a start, let's put it this way.
If we need more, we'll come back, but we're thinking a couple of mailings, also some use of Facebook, so.
I second it. There you go.
All right, it's, it's fine. Any discussion?
What, when's time for where?
I'll probably just apply it all to the select bins budget, and it's just gonna run over.
Well, if we have to designate something, we can take it out of the contingency? If we have to, but last time, we just stuck it in the select bunch budget, right?
No, who is contingency?
I'm sorry?
It's not really an emergency, though.
I'm just saying, last time, it was listed in the contingency.
I don't, I thought we stuck it out of the... I thought we stuck it out of the select budgets.
I mean, honestly, I think we'll be fine, we did.
Yeah.
So.
All right, just leave for select bunch budget. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. She's giving me the funny look over there.
Kerry, you seconded it.
You seconded it? Yes. And everybody voted in favor of it. Anything else?
To always be said, let be done. Make, make it so.
Oh, um, sorry, one last thing.
Yeah.
A request has been made to close town offices early December twenty-fourth.
Is that a party day?
No, no, maybe for Christmas, no, 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 no.
So, what's early?
Well,
Lunchtime?
Noon was suggested. Christmas is on a Wednesday.
Okay, that's what I was gonna ask.
Yeah.
So, just you?
Uh, the request did not come out of our office, so.
So, are you requesting all town?
The request was for, I believe the request was for everybody, yeah.
Why not?
Why not? Well, if you give them Christmas, then you're gonna give them New Year's Eve as well, oh my goodness.
Nobody around here ever seems to care about New Year's Eve.
Be mindfulness, it's the holiday season.
I don't know that anyone has, I don't recall requests... Yeah, people don't seem to care about New Year's Eve. Durham gets that in.
For you.
Do you know this for a fact? Yes. Yeah, they've already been posting them all.
Probably snow that day anyway, it'll be a snow day, so.
I'm good with that.
Ice, whatever.
Make it so.
Do you need a vote? I think we're all acquiesced to the request.
We're all acquiescing to the request.
We all acquiesced to the request. Anything else?
No, thank you.
I move to adjourn, do you have a second?
Second.
That was recourse, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.